So ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start this meeting now. There's agendas on that table over there. There's a dozen donuts, help yourself. Shayna Barnes, our colleague, Councilor-at-Large, is running a little late. She's at a wake over in Randolph, but she is en route with a case of water as well. Of course, I'm Bob Sullivan, Councilor-at-Large. Moses Rodriguez, Councilor-at-Large. Wyn Farwell, Councilor-at-Large. We're joined by Shirley Azak, Ward Seven Counselor. Jack Lally, Ward Six Counselor. State Representative and former Ward Six Counselor, Michelle Dubois. Former Counselor from Ward Seven, Christopher McMillan.
Ann Borogad.
And Ann Borogad, Counselor from Ward Five is here as well, and I'm sure other people will come in. Really, the gist of this meeting tonight, and I want to thank Moses, Shayna, and Wyn. Two years ago, when I was the Council President, I thought it was the smart thing to do is to have these quarterly meetings. At that time, it was all local officials. School Committee, City Council, Mayor, and two Brockton reps for Southeastern Regional Vocational. Last year, that didn't continue. So with the new legislative body that we have, we have really a good core group of people on the council this year. I asked my colleagues, they jumped on board, they said absolutely, let's do it. Really, the whole gist of these meetings, first of all, is it's never been done before. The history of Brockton, the four Councilors-at-Large that serve all seven wards, all 28 precincts, have never collectively had citywide meetings. So this is kind of historic, and I hope, and I know, with these gentlemen and my colleague, Councilor Barnes, we're gonna continue. So this is the first of four meetings planned for this year, and we will continue to do it next legislative session as well. But really, the gist is going to be to, for us as the councilors, serving the whole seven wards, 28 precincts, to kind of just talk to you, tell you what we feel is going on right now in the city of Brockton. Of course, budget's gonna be huge, charter school is huge, a lawsuit that was filed is gonna be huge. But really, we're here because we serve you. When we knock on your door, we ask for your voters, your vote of confidence, and these two gentlemen, and Shayna and I, really, we honor and we believe it's a privilege. So what we did before, it was a little different setup, but it is taped. So if you do have a question when we get to the Q and A, again, you can ask questions, suggestions, criticisms. This is just an open forum for you, the taxpayer, the residents, the constituents. But if you do want to ask us a question, please come to the microphone, because it is being taped for cable. And with that being said, I'm gonna pass it on to my colleagues as well.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm the new kid on the block, seven weeks into being a member of the City Council. I said last night, and I'll say it tonight, I see some young faces here. So for those of you who don't know, it was my honor to be on the Brockton Police Department for about 25 years, patrolman and sergeant. Then I ran for the school committee, I served 10 years. I served as mayor for four years, from January 92 to January 96. And ironically, many of the same issues now were the ones that rose to the forefront back in those years, particularly city finances, public safety, financing the schools. And now I'm honored to be on the City Council. So I guess my particular interest is always public safety, but I will say a couple of words about the budget. It's gonna be messy. The state changed the formula for how they provide state educational aid to the city in terms of low-income children. And without going into all of the nuances, we're gonna take a $5.6 million hit. Now, that in and of itself might not seem like much, but when you take a $5.6 million hit and you have rising fixed costs, because we have collective bargaining agreements, we have costs associated with maintaining school buildings, it really translates into what I hope won't be, but could be catastrophic. So we're all working together, we support the schools. I think one of the reasons why you see so many councilors here tonight is that we all share the team approach. Now, we're not gonna agree on everything. There'll be times that Bob may want to do something, and for whatever reason, I don't agree, and vice versa, Moses may be in the same position. But like a family, where you can have disagreements, we all pull together, because what's best for the city and its residents is really what's important. So having said that, team approach, we want to hold these meetings, we want to hear from you, we think it's the right thing to do. And the other thing is, if there's one thing I hate about politics, is people that show up at election time, and they want to have a meeting, and they want to get to know you. We don't want to do that. We want to be here continuously, we want to be accessible, we want to try to address any concerns, and we don't want it to look like, oh sure, here they are again, because they're running for reelection. That doesn't cut it with any of us. This is a job. We got hired to do a job in November, and we're gonna do that job to the best of our ability. So thank you for the honor of serving in this position. And with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague, Councilor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Wyn. Thank you, Bob. Good evening, everybody. I'm glad that we are taking this show on the road. And I'm glad you brought that up, that this is a non-election year for us, and it's an opportunity for us to actually hit the road and see what's going on directly in the neighborhoods. We are often at the ward councilors' meetings, we're guests at those meetings, because we tend to sit back and let the ward councilors run their own meetings. But we frankly don't have a great deal of an opportunity to come out and listen to the folks. So I'm glad that we are doing this, and we agreed on this, all four of us agreed on this, to do this and to take it across the city, not just to do it in one block or one school, but to take it across the city and really listen to you, the voters in this city. Because a lot of times, you get talked to instead of being talked at, or understanding what's being said, from my standpoint, where it might be a little different from your standpoint. So what we want to do is, instead of talking to you, is talk with you and carry out a conversation with you to find out what can we do to help you and help us make this city a better city for everybody. The city of Brockton has complex issues, and will continue to have complex issues. But it's not an issue that's gonna get resolved by the 18 of us in city government, the 11 councilors, actually 19 with the mayor, the seven school committee members and the mayor, we're not gonna be able to resolve the issues of the city. It's impossible. There's 100,000-plus people roaming the streets of the city of Brockton, and we need everybody to kind of buy into keeping Brockton alive and well. So that's one of the reasons why I believe that this is a great thing for the city, that we're actually reaching out and doing it in a non-election year, so it doesn't sound like we're out here beating the sidewalks and knocking on doors looking for votes. But we are actually doing this because we want to hear from the taxpayers and the residents of the city. What my colleagues have said in terms of the budget and some of these other issues that we are gonna be looking at and working on going forward are gonna be real issues. We're gonna have some tough choices to make very, very soon with regards to the schools, and it has a snowball effect in the sense, because it's gonna affect other things as well. But trust you me, as a resident of this city, I don't want to see us cut anything in terms of programming, but sometimes we're gonna have to make the tough choices and cut things that might be viewed as tough choices. So with that, I'm gonna pass the microphone back on to Bob. And again, bring up whatever you feel that you need to bring up. We might not have the answers for you, but it's something that we're gonna go research, and perhaps together we can come up with a solution. Because it's not just putting your questions out there, but at the same time, put out your questions, but if you have some positive suggestions, some things that we can do a little different, please bring it, because it's important for us too to take your concerns and take it to City Hall and see how we can, you know, I know it's cliche, you know, that we can together work to resolve the problems in this city.
Thank you, Moses. And what we're gonna do now, that was the introduction, but what we're gonna do now is how we open up a City Council meeting. If you could please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So really, what we're gonna do tonight is we're going to hear from you, but with that being said, on the agenda, and again, there are copies over there, because this is Ward Seven, if Shirley Azak, the great Ward Seven Counselor, would like to come up here, do you want to give an update at all?
No, I'm just, if any questions do come up regarding Ward Seven, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, okay, thanks, Shirley. Jack Lally, I know you had a ward meeting last night, do you want anything, to say anything, Jack?
I'll say hi. Do you want me to go ahead?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Jack Lally. I'm the City Counselor for Ward Six. Updates, if any. We've got, where we're working on, the area near the old Remova Park, declaring that land surplus, so we can put it out to bid for a sports complex, which will have its access off of Route 37, but still, you know, so it doesn't impede on the neighborhoods nearby, and will keep green space in the area while providing tax dollars for the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jack. Ann Borogad, Ward Five, do you want to say something, Ann? And I do also want to acknowledge Jerry Cassidy, former Ward Three City Counselor, who is a Democratic nominee, and he will be our new state rep for the Ninth Plumb District. If he votes for himself, because there's no Republican, Jerry, you only need one vote, so vote for yourself.
No about those vote things. Yes, first of all, everybody vote, next Tuesday, polls open at 7 until 8 o'clock at night. But I just wanted to announce that Ward Five meeting will be on March 10 at the East Branch Library, which is located at 54 Kingman Street. And what we're going to be having is a representative from OCPC, which is Old Colony Planning Council, on the study they're doing on Route 28 from Avon to West Bridgewater and the plans, and they want everyone's input to improve that road, the sidewalks, and the traffic signals. Okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ann. If anybody else, ward councilors come in, by all means, on the agenda, they could give an update if they choose to. Next agenda item was school department. I don't know if anybody here is from the schools, I know Superintendent Smith was attempting to make it, but if she comes, or if anybody comes from the schools, by all means, we could give them that form. Public safety update, I know we have Steve Hook, Steve, do you want to give any update relative to, okay. Bill Healy from Brockton Police had another meeting, he is gonna be coming over here tonight to give us an update relative to his endeavors. One thing I can tell you, and then we can open it up unanimously on the City Council and our state delegation, and again, we have three state reps and one state senator, and the school committee, we were all opposed to the proposed charter school. A lot of us went and testified at the state level, sent in letters, but ultimately, the Commission of Education made a favorable recommendation, the governor wanted a favorable recommendation, and it did pass the other day favorably. So there will be a charter school in the city of Brockton, it's called New Heights, and quite honestly, it will have a detrimental financial impact on our Chapter 70 funding from the state. And again, we get our Chapter 70 funds relative to the school side, and then we get our Chapter 90 funds as well. So as Wyn said, we had a special meeting last Saturday morning, it was called with the President of the Council, Tim Cruz, and the mayor, Bill Copander, and it included the elected officials on the City Council and the school committee to talk about Governor Baker's proposed budget. And as Councilor Farwell said, I mean, we're looking at almost a $6 million deficit right up front, and we know that that figure's probably gonna grow relative to contract-dollar expenses. So we have tough times ahead. A lot of us that have served on the council a long time, and I've been there 11 years, we've seen some good budgets, but mostly in recent years, they've been bad budgets relative to tough financial, economic times. So again, the mayor will be generating his budget, it will be coming to us. I believe Council President Cruz will probably call budget hearings early June, maybe late May, but probably early June. But, you know, don't be naive to the fact that it's gonna be really, really tough times, and we're gonna have to do the best what we can with what we have. But I think you should feel, rest assured, that there are some really talented people on the City Council with great varying skill sets and backgrounds. I mean, we have a former mayor with us, we have a former, Moses worked for Jim Harrington when he was mayor, so we have a lot of skill sets I think are gonna be beneficial. But with that being said, unless my colleagues have anything else, and I know Shayna will, Councilor Farwell.
I just have one quick thing, and I don't know if anyone has explained how the city budget process works, it's different than the state. The mayor will get together, and he will meet with department heads, he'll meet with the chief financial officer, and he submits a budget. The budget is then transmitted to the council. We only have two options. We can adopt an appropriation as presented, or we can reduce it. We can't add to it, and we can't move money. We can't take, for example, money from this particular department, because we think it's overfunded, and give it to another department that's underfunded. So we are somewhat limited, however, I would still say that we are checks and balances on making sure that the appropriations are what they should be for a given department, and that we do due diligence when the budget document reaches us. But I wish we could add to it, I wish we had the power to do that if we had available funds, but the chief executive calls those shots, and we only are the people who can, again, reduce or approve and not move money around without an appropriation from the mayor. So if the budget comes out, and some of you have a lot of angst, which could happen, I just thought it was important for you to understand our role, because it is what it is. That's what's going to happen, and we're gonna do the very best we can.
Well, as I said, we, at least I didn't come here to talk to, at you. We came here to listen to what you have to say. I know that there's some folks that are at least sitting at that table up there, that probably have some tax issues. And to go along with what you were saying in terms of the budget, the same applies to the taxes, basically. I know perception has it that the city councilors are the ones who basically increase taxes in the city. We honestly didn't increase taxes. What we do, we take a recommendation from the mayor and his CFO, what the presentation that they make, and they gave us a scale of increase it by five or increase it by 10. And we pick between five and 10 what the increase is gonna be. So to basically think that the councilors themselves are the only ones that are actually responsible totally for tax increase in the city is ludicrous. And I want to make sure that it's put out there, because as a matter of fact, you were not on the council yet, but at least you and I voted against the tax increase, along with Shirley from Ward Seven. But at the same time, it's passed, and in a democratic society, we need to do what we need to do to move the city forward. But I just wanted to make sure that it's also understood that it's not the City Council itself that decides, you know, gets up in the morning and decides that we're gonna go up there and basically increase your taxes. The city, through the mayor, through, to the administration, they propose a tax increase, and we either vote on it based on what their recommendations are. The limits, they set the limits between, like I said, between five and 10. It's never at zero, because if it's at zero, we would vote for the zero. So let's just keep it clear and understood that it's not the city councils that actually go up there and do increase the taxes, because we set the tax rates, but we set the tax rates with recommendations from the administration. So do you want to?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, there's two important things that I didn't know before I got on the City Council. What Moses is talking about is that a tax factor has to be adopted by the City Council. The factor is determined by the CFO relative to a recommendation, and it's the scale that Moses said. The city of Brockton has a split tax rate, right? We have our commercial, industrial, we have our residential. There are a lot of municipalities in the Commonwealth that actually have a single source of a tax. So when people have called us, and many of us have gotten calls, and rightfully so, people are saying, well, my taxes went up, but yet the factor was actually less than last year's. Well, there's an assessed value, right? The city's been going in and assessing and reassessing value. My house went up like 60 grand, I mean, how do you figure that? And I know a lot of yours probably went up quite a bit. But again, what Moses said is 100% accurate. The City Council is a legislative body, what we're charged to do is determine what the recommended factor should be adopted, and then that's gonna contemplate what the rate and the factor will be. So with that being said, I know Councilor Barnes came, because she dropped off the water. Okay, she's gone again, but she'll be back. With that being said, I think what we can do, we can let Shayna speak. Does anybody have any questions who would like to come up? Because really, that's what it's about. Please come up to the microphone if you could.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Lee Hoplitt, and I live at 15 Faxon Street with John Drazinski, and we own property on 15 Faxon Street. And just like everybody else in Brockton, we got a tax increase this year, and we figured out, you know, why it happened. But could you please tell us if you know if it's already in the works, or if you think it's going to be presented to you in the first half of the year? Are we gonna get an increase on the water, sewer, and trash bills also? Is that percentage gonna go up also? Because I know it's rated by how many, you know, feet of water you use, you know, it's rated on the gauge. Is that gonna go up, percentage gonna go up also for the figuring?
Yeah, as of today, the City Council hasn't been given any type of request relative to that. That would be a filing that would be made, it would be on the City Council agenda, it would be referred to Finance Committee, where we would then have an open discussion. But as of right now, to the best of my knowledge, no, we don't have that. I'm not saying that it's not gonna happen, but as of right now, none of us are aware of that.
Yeah, because we already get hit with the real estate, are we gonna get hit with that other bill too, going up? That's what we were wondering.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we don't, and that's the truth, we don't know.
You haven't been approached about that yet?
No, not at all.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilor Barnes?
Oh, okay, okay. Forgive my tardiness, I was...
Yeah, we told you, you were a week, yep.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being patient, and I don't actually know what was already shared. Talked about me, okay. Any questions? Any questions, clarification issues? No, you know, I would probably just defer to my colleagues now and, you know, chime in as appropriate if anybody has any questions for me. As one of your four councilors-at-large, I'm here to answer it. I'm sure that when I came in, I heard some things about the tax issue, and explaining some of the tax factor, and how that factors in on actual monies that you spend on your taxes, and as it correlates to the tax factor. So if there are any questions, I'm just here with my colleagues.
Thank you, Shayna. By all means, please, please come up. John?
Water and donuts, that's a good... I don't really have a question, it's just a comment. And first of all, I'd like to say that I think this is a great idea. You guys having quarterly meetings, especially in a non-election year, it shows that you're concerned about the citizens, and, you know, having it in different, I don't know what the plan is for going forward, but having it in different venues would be a good idea also. So thank you for, thank you so much for this meeting. I just want to make a comment. As the four of you know, there's a proposed sports complex in Ward Six. And this idea was started by former Ward Six Counselor and State Representative Michelle Dubois, and now former, I'm sorry, present Counselor, Ward Six Counselor, Jack Lally has picked up the ball. When and if this comes before the council, I urge the four of you to support it wholeheartedly. I think it's a great project. It's not a power plant, it's not a casino, it's a, what I call, a people-friendly business that the city needs. Thank you.
John, just to let you know, North Middle School now, then we will do West, we will do South, we will do East. I don't know what the order's gonna be, but we're gonna hit all the old former junior highs, but middle schools now.
Excellent, thank you.
And with regards to the sports complex, I'm happy to announce that we had a real estate committee meeting just a couple days ago, and it passed unanimously in terms of our support to recommend favorably to the entire council, and I don't see any reason why it isn't gonna go any further than that in terms of support. It's something that I strongly believe in, especially having the type of community that we have, with the needs that we have in this community. I don't see any reason why any of our guys and girls would oppose that particular project. So you can rest assured that we will continue to push it and see to it that we actually have a nice facility and fruition.
I just want to explain really quickly, I just want to explain to the residents who sometimes you may not be able to come into some of the committee hearings, real estate or some of the other subcommittee hearings. So in the hearing, the treasurer was there, the procurement officer was there, the mayor was there, and the city solicitor, he was there as well, and, oh, and the city planner, they were there, and they provided us with the proposal, the initial proposal, for three different projects, but this one in particular, because you asked about it. And it has everything in there, and it's on there, we had a chance to ask questions. And, you know, going forward, I want to concur with my colleague and just say that it really does look like a really good plan, and I'm sure that, you know, my colleagues and I will follow it closely to make sure that this gets done, because, you know, it is something, it's an idea that's coming to Brockton that's not a predatory industry. It's something that's gonna bring families in, this is something that'll bring people in, not to bring them in and to have them, you know, leave with their pockets turned out. You know, you'll leave and you'll get something, and I think that's what's gonna spur on a lot of new growth here in the city, and people will see that. So I just wanted to mention that about the actual meeting, and what happens in those subcommittee meetings.
I'm pretty excited about it being in Ward Six.
Yeah, I mean, it's really a win-win. I mean, it's good for Brockton, it's good for the kids and the adults that are gonna be engaged in that. And again, kudos to Rep Dubois, because she has, again, she was on the City Council for 10 years, and she was a cheerleader banging the drum on that for quite some time. And I concur with Moses, I don't see anybody on the council objecting to that. With that being said, anybody else, Tom Monahan, Ward Two City Counselor, came here. Thanks for being here, Tom.
Hi, my name is Jody Price. I've been a resident of Ward Seven for about 25 years, and a resident of Ward Six when I was a kid, for probably 20 years before that. So my question has a lot to do with what John was just talking about, and Shannon, how do we build on this idea of getting not decadent, what I call decadent businesses in the city, but businesses that we can be proud of, that will provide a lot of jobs? Because I'm not an economist, but I do know that if we don't have a good job base in the city, we don't have a good tax base. And I know in Brockton, our job base is falling, 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 while everyone else around us is rising. My other question, and then I probably won't ask anymore, is my family has sadly been on the forefront of the heroin epidemic in the city for about 10 years. And I felt like we were wolves crying in the darkness back then with what we thought was probably gonna happen in the city and the area with the heroin epidemic. And it has. And it seems like there's no solution, and to hear, you know, just kind of, well, we'll work with the mayor, we'll do this, we'll do this sort of superficial Band-Aids for it, I'd like to hear what are some of the solid strategies you have to fighting drugs in the city that affects all of our communities across the city, fighting gang violence, and creating a safe environment so people do want to move into the city. Whether we've got a sports complex or not, if we're seen as a crime-ridden city, we're not gonna attract people to come. Thank you.
If I could just address the first question, I learned actually, in the last special election for state representative, I was actually exposed to a lot of different industries that are clamoring to come into the city of Brockton and to provide us with resources and networks that we never had before. And I'm hoping to continue those relationships and to, you know, bring these people in. I actually just mentioned to Rob May the other day about an opportunity that came across my desk that I think might be good for Brockton, and he's gonna vet it out and, you know, take a look at it. But again, I'm not really into the whole predatory system. I don't, I believe that we've been preyed upon enough as a community and as a city, and it's time for us to start to get over that hump and to be able to start to be self-sufficient. And we can be a Foxborough. Foxborough has probably one of the lowest tax bases in the state of Massachusetts. And it's because of the industry that they pumped in there with the Patriots Place, we can do that. If we just leverage our marketability a lot better, we can do that. And I think we're on the, we're on the goal to start doing that. And this particular, like I said, this particular race, it opened the eyes of a lot of people who may not have been familiar, or Brockton may not have been on their radar before. So there are a lot of really good industries that are looking to come in here, and definitely, you know, working with my colleagues and our state delegation, see if we can get that done. There's no reason, like you said, there's no reason for other people to prosper off of some of these things, where we can have, that we have some of the infrastructure, we have some of the parts, we have the site, we have the land, we can do it. And it will take a little bit of time, but I'm confident to say that I think this was like a light switch turn, this was a turn-on to some people, that they want to invest in Brockton. So we can just kind of keep that momentum going. And again, you know, if anybody has ideas, I mean, I bring Rob May ideas all the time, and even if, you know, they don't really filter out, but I bring it to him all the time, just check it, just check it out. If it's not something that's gonna work, then it's not gonna work. But at least we tried. The only failure is not trying, right? So I just wanted to kind of mention that. So there are people that are looking to come into Brockton for the right reasons, for positive reasons, not money-making ventures, for what they can contribute to us as a community and as a city. With regard to the opioid situation, I do know too, that the, a little bit earlier in one of the last sessions, I believe, the state legislature, they passed an opioid bill... I can't, I don't know exactly what it is, but maybe Representative Dubois can mention it.
So in this, there was a major opioid bill passed last session, but in this session, we made the trafficking of fentanyl a crime. So that will, that's a really dangerous drug that is usually trafficked with heroin. We've recently passed a law that women are going to be no longer sent to Framingham Prison when they are sectioned...
35.
35 for drug and alcohol addiction, they'll be going to Taunton State Hospital. We're passing a law to allow police stations to accept heroin and drug paraphernalia and drugs without arresting the addicts if they come in and they really want to make a genuine step forward in their recovery. And I know that Mayor Carpenter has already talked to our delegation and talked to people at the state house about having Brockton be one of the first cities that starts doing that, allowing people that have drug addiction to bring in their drugs without any risk of arrest. But there's a lot more to be done.
The other thing, thank you, Representative. The other thing, I sit on the Plymouth County Drug Task Force. The other thing in that bill on the House side is relative to the chapter 30, the section 35 warrants, if anybody is aware of what that is, is if your loved one is impacted by drugs or alcohol, you have the ability to go to court. It's a civil procedure, but you can go to the court to actually have that loved one taken in for protection. The problem with, under the law right now, under the 35, is it's only good for 24 hours. So you go to court in the morning, that thing by the end of the day, that thing's gone. You'd have to go back to court. So if they can't find your loved one within that, you've got to keep going back, going back, going back. To the wisdom of the House, what they did is they're going to extend that for five days. It's going to be a sunrise to sunset, meaning it's going to be valid when the courts open. So it's really a benefit to anybody that does use that, and it is a mechanism that should be used. One other thing, just to answer your question, ma'am, relative to businesses coming to Brockton, a lot of businesses have come to Brockton, right? Bernardi, Caneely Foods, Crown Linen, right around here. You know, we are getting businesses, we also are attracting businesses to stay here. WB Mason, just a few years ago, came before us, Leo Meehan, the CEO, they were going to leave Brockton. What we did was, we gave them a TIF, Tax Incremental Financing, in order, I think it was $3 million at that time, in order for them to stay here, and they are still downtown. Another thing that we did, that is a catalyst for development, is the city council adopted chapter 40R, smart growth zoning. Whatever your pros and cons are on the Trinity Financial Project downtown, I will say that if Brockton hadn't adopted chapter 40R, that wouldn't come to fruition. The growth of Vincente's Food, the Old Style Market, Unpleasant, again, chapter 40R, that wouldn't have come to fruition. So there are things that the legislative body can do, but again, as Wynne said, we can earmark funds. We'd love to earmark, you know, a million bucks to fight the opiate epidemic, right? Both legal and illegal drugs that are really, it's an affliction, right? It's an epidemic. But we don't have the ability to do that as a legislative body. But we can work in conjunction and collaboration with those that do have the financial strings. We can work with Michelle and Jerry and Claire Cronin and Senator Brady, and we can work with Mayor Carpenter. I think Brockton's really beneficial by having Wynne Falwell, not because he was a former mayor, kudos to that, I think that's great, but because he was a cop. Paul Stedenski, a cop. I mean, we are having some skill sets on the city council that have not been there before. Paul would be here tonight, but he's having a Ward 4 councillor meeting at 7 o'clock down at the Davis. I will make a promise going forward, the at-large meetings will not conflict with another ward meeting. That was just kind of an error tonight. But I do, I do want to pass the microphone on. Thank you.
I guess I have a couple of real special things I'd like to see done. First, I do think the opioid problem is a statewide problem, and it's going to require intervention by the state in terms of funding. There's an insufficient number of beds to treat people. I think that is really a big problem. I got a text message from someone I worked with a couple of years ago, and her brother unfortunately has fallen into a serious situation, and she didn't know where to turn, so I told her to call the Men's Addiction Treatment Center down in Meadowbrook Road to see if she could get him a bed. We don't have enough treatment programs, and we need them. At the local level, I really believe, even though we won't reach everyone, we need education in the schools. We've really got to reach kids, and I'm talking about, believe it or not, elementary level. I'm talking about 3rd and 4th grade, where you start talking about these issues, where you start in a non-confrontational way educating kids about what's going on, what can happen, what's going to happen to you personally, what's going to happen to you legally, what's going to happen to you medically if you get involved with this stuff. And the last thing I would say is, well, not the, next to last, I do favor treatment as opposed to incarceration. Not for someone who's pushing, but for somebody who perhaps has committed some crimes, even if they, you know, get picked up for shoplifting and they've got some heroin on them, defer the criminal case, let them get into a treatment program, give them that first proverbial bite of the apple to see if we can save them, if we can turn them around. Again, we're not going to have 100% success rate, but I think we have to try. Throwing someone in jail, probably to spend time with someone who's a drug dealer and can educate them on where they can get even more stuff, is not the way to go. And also, the police have a role to play. I enjoyed being out in the cruiser. I enjoyed getting out and talking to people. And I do think, no matter how many police we have in the city, I want the police officers to have the best possible relationship with all of the different populations that live in the city. I don't think kids are going to run up and hug a cop. I mean, I just, I'm not that naive. But I would hope someone might be able to say to an officer, I don't want to get involved, it didn't come from me, but this afternoon at such and such an intersection, there's going to be a car from Quincy bringing in drugs. I'd like to have that kind of relationship where information is shared, and the police can react, and they can be proactive in terms of preventing some of these things going on, instead of reacting and getting a search warrant and taking someone down. But education, additional treatment, state funding, uniform application of some strategies statewide because it's hitting every community, it's a battle. It's not going to be solved overnight, but I think we are all committed to doing whatever we can here in Brockton. I know Michelle and her counterparts in the legislative delegation are, and I hope parents and schoolteachers and the rest will join us, because it's really very, very sad. It's, you know, good people, good people can run afoul of this, and we're going to do everything we can.
This doesn't even affect me, because I don't have any kids in the school system, so you know that, Bob. So this has nothing to do with me. But we go back and forth, and so we say on the education, we go at the state level. I've been in politics forever, and on many levels, Washington down. So we go on the level of Washington down, we say the state-level legislation makes the rules, and then you say, now Brockton is getting a charter. So the kids now are going to be stuck with less funding. Brockton High has a great system. The kids, you know, the schools are going to be undercut for these teachers, they give their heart and soul to these kids that they work hard. I mean, there's nothing wrong with the public school for what they're, I mean, I don't even know how to say it. I see some of these teachers, I see the teachers over at the Brookfield, that, I mean, they give everything they have, and these, I don't know, I just don't even know what I'm saying anymore. And then I see Governor Baker, and they make these decisions that just, they put a charter school into Brockton, and then Randolph and Taunton are just going to go into the lottery. Are they getting cut? Their funding? Are their money going to get taken from their schools? Like, do you know what I mean? Like, this is what I've been told. The lottery's going to come, but they're going to be chartered in. They're going to come in. I mean, like, there's so many, like, you know what I mean? It doesn't even, you know, I just, I don't know. I don't even know what I'm asking anymore, and it doesn't even affect me. So then we go, it goes into too many, like, variables, but...
I think you've expressed our frustration in Superintendent Smith's...
Yeah, and then you're, like, then you're, then you're asking, then you're saying, you're talking, and then you get into, then we get into, we get into the drugs, then you get into taxes, then you don't have to worry about your taxes, your money might as well, your taxes are going to go down, because your houses aren't going to be worth anything anyway. So it really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. I mean, I own my own home, doesn't matter. I can sell, I can move, doesn't matter. I don't have kids in this system. But it's, the point is, the legislation, yes, but it doesn't matter. Governor Baker, he just makes the decision. He dumped it on the city. Charter's coming in. Regardless, you guys all fought for it, didn't matter.
Fought against it.
Fought against it, right.
And as I said, Kelly, and those are all legitimate...
But say, so it doesn't matter, right.
I just think, when I said Kathy Smith, our superintendent, would be here, she's here, I think you should defer to her on this, if you don't mind, Kathy, and then we can all pipe in. Those are all valid and true.
Yeah, and here, I'm standing here, fighting for something that doesn't affect me at all. You know what, I could...
But it affects your city, that you live in.
It affects my city. I've lived here my entire life, affects the teachers that fight tirelessly, in day, in day out. Do you know what I mean? You know, I just, I look at it all, it's just a never-ending thing. So you're going to undercut what people are working for, you know, the budgets, and then what's going to get cut? Are the sports going to get cut? So people want to have, like, a sports complex come in, I think that's a great thing. So the kids are playing in the middle school sports, great, so that is an awesome thing. Kids should be able to play middle school sports. You know what I mean? I'm leaving to go to a game over in Bridgewater. They shouldn't be able to play. The kids in the city should be able to play. There's no reason for it. Do you know what I mean? You're talking about the drug-induced, like, the heroin, and I'm going to be dropping things off for the heroin, I mean, the homeless and the heroin, it just makes me mental. Yes, it starts in Washington and the legislature. I've been doing this my entire life. I just, it's just, but the point is, you can't fix one problem without another problem. But if this city keeps getting dumped, you know, Governor Baker, yes, the MBTI, you just can't keep doing one little problem, but you can't keep dumping on this city. We're not it. We can't just keep dumping. You can't keep dumping. And I'm sorry, that's, I don't know, just, yeah, it's my city, but...
Thank you, very heartfelt, thank you. And I think Superintendent Smith can address some of those issues.
Thank you, councilors. Use the microphone, is that...
The microphone is just for the filming, it's not really for the people in the audience.
First of all, it's interesting, and Kelly, I share your frustration. I thank you for coming in support of your teachers, of your schools, and there's so many of you out there that are doing exactly that. This was a very, very frustrating time, but interesting enough, I will have to tell you this, with everything that we're dealing with, whether it's difficult budgets that are ahead for not just Brockton, many cities, many towns, I actually feel very good about the support we have district-wide with our legislative group, our city council, our school committee. It is going to be difficult, and we are going to have to make difficult decisions, but make no mistake about it, we are out there already looking at meeting with state government. I'm connecting with other superintendents to talk about ways that we get to not just our legislators who are on board, but senators and legislators, House of Ways and Means, many of these different groups that we will be advocating. And we also are going to start to look for advocacy from each of you. We're already talking in the schools to get point people, to start to educate parents. We're going to be having actually a campaign called Brockton Kids Count. So we're going to be looking for help from many of you out there. So to address the situation on the charter school. You know, I have to tell you, I'm not completely against charters. They actually have a purpose. And when you look back at the Ed reform bill that came in in 1993, because of your very city that actually had the McDuffie case. So you brought about change. There was equity in education because of you going forward as a community, saying enough is enough, this funding isn't the way it should be, and we need a different formula. So that being said, at the time, there was a lot of push around the country for vouchers and charters. And they actually put in the bill that 25 charters could come into our state. And those charters were to have best practices, things that we could actually learn from a charter. There might have been some autonomies from a contract. Maybe there was dealing with some difficult populations where there were extra hours, summer programs, different ways of reaching kids. But that isn't where we're at today, and shame on us for letting this happen. And do not kid yourself, this is very, very political. So when you look at this charter that came in, my first question is, what's innovative about it? What are we going to learn as a district from this charter that you're proposing for the district or the city of Brockton? And I don't have enough time to go into why Taunton is involved, or Randolph is involved, but in the end, we certainly had a rebuttal against this charter, which is supposed to be to support children going to college. Well, let me tell you, it was a proud moment when I stood there on Tuesday during the hearing of visitors with all your legislative group. And it was interesting to hear the Commissioner of Ed, before the meeting started, tell the Board of Education that he had really good news for them. That around the state, there was an increase in the number of kids taking AP classes, or raising their SAT scores for underrepresented communities, minority communities. And I loved it, because when I got to talk, I got to look at that Board of Education and say, thank you, Commissioner, because Brockton was one of 13 around the state just giving that award a week ago. That you have raised your number of students going into AP classes, and you've raised the SAT scores, and you continue to send kids to college. You know, do we make it for every kid? We try. We have pathways if Brockton High is not the answer. Parents have lots of choice. So make no mistake about it, this was voted in along political lines, not because of advocacy, not because of need, not because of demand, but the bottom line as superintendent is, I do have to care about the education of every child in this city. And that includes children. We collaborate with parochial and private schools if we can help in the areas of safety and security. We collaborate in many ways and have excellent collegial relationships. I will watch this charter. This is very, very difficult. I will be a watchdog for it. I will make sure that the spending, we will take a look at, if our children are being educated, what about our special needs students, our large population of English-language learners? Are those children going to be coming back to the public schools after October 1st, which is the date that you count kids for your foundation formula, and that's important to us as a city? So make no mistake about it, we're not going away. We will continue to watch the education of every one of your children, and any child, again, that goes to the charter or the Brockton Public Schools. So please know, we are there to, to continue to watch this.
Thank you, Superintendent.
And I would say to the young lady in the back, if you can't beat them politically, sometimes you can beat them in court. We did it before, we did it with, it started off Webby versus Dukakis, and then it became McDuffie versus Dukakis. And if necessary, and I've exchanged some emails with the superintendent, I'm not opposed to seeing this city be at the forefront again of a legal challenge, because this time, we have a lot of other districts who have been adversely affected, as we do. So I suspect we'll be leading a charge with a lot of backup.
Yeah, I mean, what Wynne said, it was Robin, Robin Webby, and then it was the Hancock case and the McDuffie case. So there's been three plaintiffs coming from the city of Brockton to change that. We've talked about this collectively in the past. I do envision that, you know, we're getting shafted. I'll put the cards on the table, Brockton's getting shafted, we're not getting treated fairly, and at the detriment of our youth. So we do have, you know, a really passionate superintendent that we work really, really well with. Previous superintendents wouldn't come before the city council, other than the budget. Kathy Smith comes at the beck and call, anytime we want her, she comes there. Tonight's meeting here at North, I contacted her office, and like that, it was set up. So I mean, it's a really good partnership, you know, that we have with the school department, and that's the way it should be. You know, we're all in this together. And with that being said, are there any other questions on that? And thank you very much, Kelly Hanlon, for that question. Anybody else, please, please come up. Gene Lawton.
Thank you. I'm very proud that you enabled us to come and speak today. In regards to the charter school, I was, I had two questions, if I could. One, if Superintendent Smith could expound upon the financial liabilities of what she was just saying about the October 1st count, or the students coming back. And also, if the city council has any influence on where the physical location of the charter school would be. My concern is for either the proposed site of the Massasoit, the Old Christos, or the Gantley Building, if it could come in on either one of them, since they're under the control of the state. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me address the location. First of all, the city council would have absolutely no input whatsoever. They can place it anywhere. it anywhere. The two properties you talked about, Gene, I filed a resolve last legislative session, and it was supported 100% by my colleagues, because in good faith, we sold the Ganley building. If anybody isn't aware of the Ganley building, go down Belmont Street, right to get to Main Street, the building in front of you is the Ganley building. Joe Ganley had a store there for many, many, many years. The city owned it, and we were told by then-Governor DeVal Patrick, "Hey, convey it over, sell it to us for a buck, it'll become a property and asset of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." And in return, we're gonna put a college collaborative down there, it's gonna be really, really revitalizing downtown. Well, that sounded great, we did it. Maybe we jumped the gun, but we relied in good faith on what we were told. DeVal Patrick doesn't run again, because he can't, Charlie Baker comes in and he cuts the funding. You know, the same thing with the Old Cristos Restaurant, you know, there's the Ganas family, icons in the city of Brockton, they got paid a dollar amount from the Commonwealth, now it looks like a skateboarding park over there, it's just an empty parking lot. What I will say, Gene, addressing the Ganley building, is myself and my colleagues in the city council have agreed again to file a resolve, because under the last legislative session, we made a promise to Mayor Coppin that we would hold off a bit, because he was working with D-CAM and Governor Baker and Karen Polito, Lieutenant Governor, to see if it would come to fruition. We're not naive, it's not coming to fruition, the college collaborative is not coming downtown in the near future, that money's gonzo. So we will be collectively filing a resolve again, urging, we can't force, but we're gonna urge that the mayor speak to his colleagues at the State House, and I know Michelle Dubois and Mike Brady and Claire Cronin and Jerry Cassidy, who gets in there, are gonna be supporting us as well. We want that back, if and when the budget gets real-ordered, the city of Brockton, the college collaborative will become a reality, we can sell it back again for a buck, but we would rather own that asset as a city of Brockton asset, so that a charter school doesn't go downtown in the city of Brockton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gene, to answer your question about the October 1st date that I mentioned, under Chapter 70 funding, and again, you know, we're a large urban gateway district, we rely heavily on state funding with the formula, almost 80% of our funding comes from the state. When I talk about October 1st, on that date, and this is for districts throughout the Commonwealth, it's charters, it's public schools, anybody that receives, you know, public money. So on that date, we have a headcount throughout our school, from the little kindergarteners that are sitting there, to some of our special needs preschoolers, all the way up to our 12th graders. We give a count to the state that goes along with a student ID number. That number is solid, as far as when they go through the formula to give us a per pupil expenditure for that money, that's what comes into the district. Now what happens after October 1st, sometimes, in a district as large as ours, we could have anywhere from 100 kids, 200 kids, that from October to the end of the year come in, we have to find C-capacity for them, you know, classrooms for them to go to, there's nobody to turn away, children that are homeless, you know, large numbers of kids come into our district. When I made the comment about the charters, if you look at this charter, their business plan by October 1st accounts for 315 students that they're going to have or want to have their first year. My concern is, many times charter schools sell a bill of goods, they're going to do all kinds of things for students. So if they have 315 on October 1st, that's the funding that they get in that next cycle. And what happens many times is you end up with children getting disillusioned, families get disillusioned, for whatever reason, they end up back in the public schools. So one of the things I've shared with the Commissioner and his group is I will be watching that very closely. With a very tough budget year, we do not have that capacity, it's not that we have to educate every child that comes through those doors. So that's important to us, that October 1st date.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
Anybody else wanna talk about? Any other questions? Mr. Ford? And I do wanna acknowledge Bill Healy, Officer Bill Healy from Brockton PD has shown up. I told you he was coming, he had another meeting, and before we conclude tonight, Bill can give us an update on public safety, if there's anything. Mr. Ford?
Hi, my name is Robert Ford, I live at 61 Barney Street, and myself, like many other residents, probably witnessed the largest tax increase in the city's history. And, you know, I realize that, you know, that the government needs money to, you know, to run on, but, you know, you get to a point where enough is enough, you know, and, you know, and the basic thing is maybe to cut off the waste and spending. I mean, we're dumping $6.5 million a year for the muddy pit and nighting, or something we don't even use. There's another, lots of money being funded through the 21st Century Club, to float the, you know, the Shaw Center and the Rocks. Between those two entities, there's $8 million that the city's blowing. You know, that could do a lot of good, it could put a couple of police officers on the street, fix, you know, fix some of the deteriorating streets in the city. And the thing that's really frustrating is, I got ahold of a list of some well-connected individuals that have these massive tax abatements. And these people are either millionaires, billionaires, or well on the way to becoming one. And just a small list, there's $317,000 worth of abatements. And these are well-known folks, influential people in the city. And, you know, God help you if you're a resident, and you try to get a couple bucks knocked out of your taxes. But, you know, this whole process starts in June, a lot of people don't realize that when they have the mayor's budget, I put that in quotation marks, we all know whose budget it really is. But, you know, there's ways of trimming it down. In fact, a couple of years ago, we had a large contingent of angry residents come up, and actually, the CFO miraculously found $2 million. You know, I guess he's got the ability to pull stuff out of there at times, but, you know, it would help to keep the tax rate down. But, you know, this is, I'm just, my frustration and probably the frustrations of many other residents, that, well, in June, you have the option of trimming that budget a little bit. In fact, we've suggested on several occasions to have an outside audit of the city's books, to open up the books and see how much money the city actually has. I mean, there's-
He was asking a question about setting the tax rate and the fact that his taxes went up pretty significantly, because property values did go up in Brockton, and he mentioned he has some information, I've received a copy of it, about some potential savings in the city. A couple of things with respect to the tax rate, I think you're going to see this council next year, when the information comes into us about the levy and the amount of taxes to be raised, which is 2.5% over the prior year's levy, I think you're gonna see a very proactive group of people really drill down on the numbers that are presented and take a look at how those taxes are apportioned between residential and business. And the other thing that I'm interested in is, I'd like to find out why we have to set the tax rate in December. I haven't even asked my colleagues that, but it seems like we wait till the next to the last meeting in December, we set the tax rate, and then the tax increase is compressed into the last two quarterly payments. So let's say you only get a, only, I should say, let's say you get a $500 increase, unfortunately, you don't have four quarters to pay that, 125 a quarter, it's compressed into your last two quarters. And I'm really unsure why, if we adopt the fiscal year budget and we send the information to the state, why we can't have a hearing earlier and set the tax rate, and perhaps get the information out so that we don't compress it into the last two quarters, maybe only the last three quarters? And I'm not sure, I haven't been with my colleagues enough.
Well, the city council also has the option of lowering the factor a little bit, ease the burden.
Well, you're right, we do have that option, but unfortunately, in this city, the complexity of the issues in terms of public safety, school funding, and some of the statutory functions that we have to carry out, such as collect taxes, issue building permits, we're really down to, and I've taken a careful look at it, believe me, I would be the first to raise a red flag, we're really down to bare bones. If you look at the budget, we've got a lot of vacant positions on the city side, because we simply don't have the money to fill them.
But even if they walk away from some of the bad deals they've made over the past several years.
Well, you know, hindsight is always 20/20 vision, and I know all of us share profound frustration over some of the decisions that were made years and years ago, and, you know, the ma-
As far as the Aquaria situation is, there's 13%, that nobody knows who they are, they're local investors or the people that are-
Yeah, I mean, so Mr. Ford's talking about Aquaria, and everybody has either read about it or heard about it. The city council, I actually, I'll take credit, because I did this, I filed a resolve six years ago to have Aquaria come before the city council, explain to us how they are abiding by the contract, six years ago, mind you, how they are abiding by the contract vis-à-vis marketing. Who are they marketing to? They have one customer, the city of Brockton. Fast forward, they came in once, this individual had absolutely no information whatsoever, okay? So it died because there was a new legislative session two years later. I filed the thing again four years ago, I get the same guy that comes before us, that absolutely has no clue, he's disgusted that we asked him to come before us. Again, we can only invite people, we don't have a subpoena power, but again, ill-prepared, and this guy is supposed to be an agent for a business partner with the city of Brockton, getting paid millions and millions of dollars. Two years ago, I filed the thing again, and this time, a new guy came before us with his attorney, and said, "I'm so sorry, I don't have any information, but I'll get back to you." So, you know, I got my Irish up, and we got it going, and what happened was, to the credit of Council Rodriguez, and supported by Shayna and everybody on the council at that time, we cut the funding. And you know what? He showed up the next time, and he had some information. You know, it shouldn't be like that. Now ultimately, you know, as a lawyer, I understand how contracts work, you sign a contract, if you don't do something, you're gonna be sued for breach, right? We got to the point where they threatened to breach us and bring us to court, but they also gave us the information. It was three binders, each this size, you know, I would have to say, the frustration level on the city council was magnified, and really magnified, because of the fact that this is what they told us, ladies and gentlemen, they told us that they didn't come before us to give us the information, because they were working on a negotiation with the current mayor, potentially Brockton would buy this thing, okay? And what I said to them was, with all due respect, the previous mayors, Mayor Belzotti, Mayor Harrington, weren't negotiating with you to buy it, and you still didn't give us the information. So what you're saying just doesn't make any common sense or rational sense. So I concur with you, Mr. Ford, I mean, we're dealing with a lot. The abatement issues you're talking about, city council doesn't have anything to do with abatements. Anybody can request abatement under master general law, as you know, it's time-sensitive. I would urge people that if they feel that they should, you should definitely do it. In terms of you saying certain people got it, you know, we don't have anything about that information, meaning we can't decide who gets it and who doesn't, but that's interesting. Moses, do you have anything to offer on any of those?
One other thing, Bob, the other day in the newspaper, you see the city of Taunton, they said, "Thanks, but no thanks to Aquaria," when they saw the price of the water.
Yeah, I mean, again, Brockton's the only customer. That's it.
All right.
Well, as Council Sullivan said, you know, the, you're, one of the things that I think goes by the, sometimes, the, by the side in this city is actually to the fact that none of us are really professional city councilors, and I don't mean that we don't do our jobs professionally, I mean that we are not full-time city councils or paid a full-time salary, which means that we all have our secondary job, or primary jobs in some cases, to provide for our families, which also makes us taxpayers. You know, we pay, when your taxes went up, my taxes went up. I have another home where my daughter lives on Traboo Street, on the south side of the city, my taxes in that little house went up 600 bucks, from what I paid the previous year. So our taxes are going up as well, too, so the frustration that you feel, our frustrations that I'm feeling, and all my colleagues are feeling, because our taxes are also going up. Our expenses are also going up, and our city looks lousy in the sense, in the eyes of a lot, because of the crime issues, because of the drug issues that we have. I know that, and I think I said this during the campaign, and I'm glad Council Farwell brought that up, that we can't lock or jail our way out of the problems that we have in this community. We cannot incarcerate our way out of the problems that we're facing in this city. So we have to invest in a lot more education, because that I know of, I'm no doctor, but no person is born addicted to anything. You're born addicted, if your mother's already addicted, you might have an addiction. But from ground zero, if there's no addiction, no one's ever been addicted in your family, you're not addicted in your family, you're not born addicted to anything. Somehow, you pick that up as you go along, and I think that's why it's important for us to invest on education, to teach young people to stay away from a lot of the real bad drugs that are taking place in our community. Because what ends up happening is, like we have a little boat with holes all over it, and we're just bailing the water out, we just keep bailing the water out without fixing the boat. We need to fix the problem, which is the boat, because no matter how quickly you bail it out, it's gonna come back in again. And unfortunately, that's actually what's happening with the issues of drugs and violence in our community. We're not really fixing the problem. We're putting a Band-Aid, and the men and women in the police department, they do a wonderful job in fighting crime, or resolving crime once it happens, but we gotta spend a great deal of more time and effort in preventing crime from happening. Because they solve the problems, I mean, they solve the crime once it happens, but we're not spending a great deal of time working on prevention. I'm glad that the, you know, that we're looking into the sports complex, you know, to bring it to the community, to help our community out, because it gives our kids another avenue, another thing to do in the community. But we, we as a community, we need to start, we have to go back to basics and work on basic stuff to help our kids and help our communities stay, one, off the drugs that are becoming very addicted for them in the community, and also at the same time, try to do what we can to help young people from getting involved in the activities, in the illegal activities, or crime-related activities that they're involved in. Because arresting our way out of it, it's not gonna work, because we put one away, another one takes their place. You know, we put two away, two will take their place. So by just arresting our way out of it, I don't think it's a solution to anything, because you know what? If it was a solution, it would have been taken care of by now. And it's not been taken care of, because that's not the answer to both the drugs and the violence that we have in our streets.
And I don't wanna prolong this particular question, or this particular set of issues, but I just wanna reiterate, you know, we're here as elected officials, yes, but like Council Rodriguez said, we're also citizens, we're also residents, with concerns and with fears and issues and everything else that you all have as well. So this is a partnership. We're all in this together, we're in that same holy boat, you know, all bailing the water out together. So we have to also continue to move in a forward, with forward momentum. And I just wanna say, too, he mentioned the Band-Aid issue, and that's, I was thinking that, people have been coming with the pending budget issues, and, you know, with the release of the budget and the devastation, I'm just gonna say, the devastation that we look to with that. I just wanna caution everyone, too, to not, don't support knee-jerk kind of solutions, and I use my quote fingers. A lot of people are kinda running around, "Well, then, we have to agree to this, we have to agree to that, we have to do this, we have to do that, because we need the money, we need the money." We have to take a breath, and take a beat, and make sure that we don't get involved in these other Band-Aid solutions, that when, what happens with a Band-Aid, when it's not applied appropriately, it gets fuzzy and it falls off, then you still have a problem, right? So I think that's how we got into a lot of these problems that we have now, and like Council Farwell said, the profound frustration that we all have about things that happened when none of us were on this council. So those are the things that we don't wanna pass down going forward as well. So we have to make sure that we look with eyes wide open at the things that we're presented with. Not every idea is a good idea, and we need to use our critical thinking skills, and we need to, again, work together, and not kind of be a divisive kind of city. And we have to do that, I just wanna encourage everybody to do that. We're all partners in this, nobody is doing this alone, it's not a one man, one woman, one person show, we're all partners.
Thank you, Shayna. I do wanna acknowledge Rob May, the city planner is here, Steve Hook I mentioned earlier, he's director of Brockton Emergency Management, and thank you for what you did with the storms recently, you and your staff. Archie Gormly, a Brockton firefighter, but he's also president of the Union 144, thank you for being here, Archie, and of course, Bill Healy. And again, the men and women that serve on Brockton PD and Brockton Fire, put their lives on the line, and we have a great city with some dedicated public servants. Bill, would you like to come up? And I know, when Bill comes to these forums, he goes to every single ward councilor's meeting, but he has to be cautious in what he says relative to police actions and endeavors and planning. So with that being said, thanks for being here, Bill.
Thanks, councilors, for inviting me, and like the councilor just said, there's only so much you can say when we're on TV here, so I'm gonna keep it brief. My name's Bill Healy, I've been doing the Neighborhood Watch now for the past six years, most of you know that, I know a lot, many of your faces from the other wards throughout the city. I have a theme that I'm gonna, that I've been doing since the beginning of this year, I'm gonna continue through the rest of this year, and that is, you've heard the councilors talk about how hard we work, now it's time that the citizens start reaching out to us by way of the tip line. You read the paper every single day, every day the Brockton Police Department- You read the paper every single day, every day the Brockton Police Department, they're making an arrest, drugs and/or gun-related. And if you read the paper, and you notice that every single week you'll see that, most of this derives from tips. Most of it does. Like Council Rodriguez says, we solve the crime after it happens on almost all occasions. Again, a lot of the reasons why the crime is solved is through anonymous tips. Last December, a couple of weeks before Christmas, in a complex located in Ward 7 here, big ward meeting, just as many people as here, maybe slightly less, there was a grandmother that resides there with her grandson. And places were being broken into, Christmas gifts were being stolen. In there was the grandmother, the grandson who the police already had on the radar and we were about to arrest. She stands up with a crowd like this and says, "Snitches get stitches." A low-life human being, to be honest with you. Here's people like this, all over the community. And by the way, I live here, too, I have for 32 years. Get out of our meeting. It was unbelievable, and the people there, some of them intimidated, had already given the anonymous tips, right? Two days later, this person was arrested. What became of it, whether or not he got bailed, how long he served, we all know the deal. I don't know. I don't follow up on it. So from that point, and I figured after, you know, going through the course of 2015, I says, "2016, I've got to do something here. We've got to start really being passionate about people calling with tips anonymously. Don't be afraid, and all you have to do, you don't have to write anything down. Everybody in here is on the internet. Brockton Police Department website, Neighborhood Business Watch, click onto that, drop-down screen will come for tips. I don't even know who it is that's calling. And by the way, my program is such, a superior court judge could not force me to give the courts the information that's who gave me a tip. Can't do it. But if you don't believe that, it doesn't matter. If you go onto that tip line and give the tips, very simple, it's just a matter of typing in information, all I see is a number. Not your name, not anything. That tip is printed, and over the course of a week, several times during the week, these tips go to the chief of police. The chief of police delegates the assignment. Drug issue, off to narcotics, et cetera, et cetera. So, plead with you all, the councilors have talked about it in the past, the mayor talks about it, we've got all sorts of communication avenues. Do this. Help yourselves. Send in the tips, and we follow up on them. And every time I have a meeting like this, there'll be 10 tips tomorrow. It's just, so, do it. Don't be intimidated about it. And you'll also, for those that don't have a computer, 508-941-0244. I've got to actually double-check. Because I don't call myself. But, and I've been, in this past year, because I saw the reporters writing this number down, it's important. Yep, 508-941, did I say it? 0244. Those without, those without a computer, those that don't feel comfortable going online, that phone number, you can leave the tip there. I take the information, type it in, which I prefer you would do. I type it in, off it goes to the chief. That's simple. That's going to be the theme, so those of you that follow us around at the councilors, you're going to hear it again and again. And hopefully, during the course of the year, more tips, more people caught. And I'll take, I'm going to be here as long as they are longer. You can meet me if you have something to discuss in private, or if you have any questions right now, law enforcement-wise. I can answer any questions.
Questions for Officer Healy? Thank you, Bill.
I do also want to recognize State Representative Claire Cronin is here. Thank you for joining us tonight, Claire. And Senator Mike Brady's aide, Gene, is here as well. Thanks for being here. Bill Healy, like I said, he does yeoman's work. He goes to every single community meeting. And take him up on his offer. I mean, he wouldn't say it if it wasn't true. I mean, he cares about Brockton. Yeah, it's a paid job, but he really takes it to heart. So, by all means, if you want to reach out to him in private, feel free. Are there any other questions? Ma'am, do you have a question? Okay.
Anything about the fingerprinting, the teachers and the cost? Anything, any discussion on that tonight?
There hasn't been any discussion. Kathy, do you want to? Thank you for your question, ma'am.
Thank you, Glenna. Like many of the background checks going on, certainly all over the country, businesses, certainly schools, one of the things that came about just this past, I have to think of my years, July, I believe, of '14. And there was increments as to how long it would take to get everybody fingerprinted. I think it was actually done by last names. So in the Brockton Public Schools, it is required that all teachers, professional staff must be fingerprinted. I believe the date coming up to finalize that is this July, and it is a cost of $55. And simply, teachers also have costs when they have to renew their license. This is one of those costs associated with having a valid teacher's license to teach in the state of Massachusetts and frankly, all over the country. As far as anyone that is not a certified staff member, it is a cost of $35. That would be paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, MTAs, all of the people that make up the Brockton Public Schools. Our college students, no matter who it is, people that work in our extended-day programs all have to be fingerprinted. That's along with a query that has always been required. So again, these are background checks that they do on our employees to make sure that they are able to work with children in a school system.
Also, they should know who is applying this. Police Department has nothing to do with it, right?
We work with the police department in processing the queries, and they assist us, but the fingerprinting is a national database. I believe there are centers set up, I know there's one next to the Starbucks here, and it is a governmental, I want to say it's identi... Is it the, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, but...
Independent kind of agency that perform the fingerprint checks all over the state.
Right. If you go there, they actually check people that are getting passports or...
Also, I heard that, and I've checked other places that have done this, it's $55. A lot of money, as far as I understand. And I heard that if the state mandated, the state has to contribute something towards that $55.
Yeah, well, a state mandate is also a teacher's license, and they give us nothing to renew our license. So I don't know the answer to that, Glenna, but I do know that there are other state mandates that we have to follow for licensure, and there is no money coming from the way of the state. So at this point here, it is $55, it is borne by the employee, it is a one-time fingerprinting. I think it covers you for 10 years, and you're able to actually send it to other districts. So if a teacher were to leave Brockton and go to Rainham to teach, we could share that information as long as it was within that 10-year period. It's certainly not going to the Brockton Public Schools, it goes to the agencies that are processing it.
But is someone following that? I mean, because I, there are things that happen, like at, I told my friend, in schools, that money is not checked on and therefore, it can go astray. I just want to know. I would like to know. Something down the road, is school checking it?
Sure.
I'm not really sure about this particular agency, but I do know that there are several agencies that I work with in my day job, my bill payer job. The fees that they collect for processing things, petitions, fingerprints, all of these things that they do, it covers the cost of the processing. So it kind of, it's like a cyclical kind of process. So I'm not sure about this one, but it sounds like this particular agency, they may use the fee to continue to be able to fingerprint and to process the cases. So it might be something like that.
Do you think the school committee should be a little bit more involved in it and not check it out?
I'm not sure, Glenna, what you mean, the school committee.
You know, they, I'd like to be a frontline school committee person in law, too, and say, and they say, "What is this about?" And they know.
They certainly do know. The fingerprinting, again, is something that is used for a teacher to gain employment. And what it does is it gives confidence to every one of you out there, to parents, to community members, knowing that the people sitting in front of your children or working with your children are able to be there, do not have criminal backgrounds. You know, they're not the kind of people that you wouldn't want in front of your children. So I do believe that we support any measure that allows us to have a comfort to make sure our children are safe.
Very good. I also just have one more. I have a lot, but not just. All the programs are taken out of elementary schools. Is there any way we can get some of them back in, and one in particular is strange danger? I can't believe that, you know, we're looking for safety in our city, and we take out elementary programs that are only...
Yeah, we certainly don't take programs out. We are very inclusive. Many times, the programs come with grant funding, which is very helpful to a district struggling to put books in front of children and technology and all of the things they need. I know right now, we have a great program. We actually have our Brockton school police officers working in our fifth-grade classes, our sixth and seventh-grade classes throughout the district. We have a number of collaborations with different agencies, nonprofits. So, Glenna, anytime a grant comes through, our grant writer is on it. Today, there was actually just a $300,000 grant with Bayweb for working with kids for, I know Representative Cronin was there today. This was given throughout the state. So, I mean, we're out in front of whatever program is there, we work collaboratively with nonprofits, with any districts, any other school districts, so we continue to do that. We have seen a drop because of grants in after-school programs, academic support, summer programs, but we continue to be out there looking to make sure we have things for these children to be involved in.
One of the things, Charter School, sorry, I missed that. Was there a vote on that?
There was.
And how did it come about? Yes, no?
I'm sorry, the Charter School vote, what I said earlier when I stood here, this very much was a community effort. I talked about truly looking at how charters came about many, many years ago. And a lot of it was sharing best practices, you know, being able to do something that we, the public school, couldn't do. This very much was not this application. I was proud to stand alongside your full legislative contingent on Tuesday. I know our city council certainly supported us. Our full school committee, that came across loud and clear before the hearing of visitors. I felt it was very much along political lines. What I also said was, although this group is coming in, we would be a watchdog, we would make sure that if our children are promised something, we will make sure that that's what is delivered to our children in the Brockton community. And I'm happy to talk to you about it, certainly, Glenna, at another time.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Senator Brady sends his regards. I forgot to mention this earlier, he's at a meeting at the State House with the Senate President. Any other questions? Because there's one, there's one elephant on the table that wasn't brought up tonight, and I'm going to do it. Cursory, the power plant. I just want people to understand, because I've gotten a lot of calls, I know my colleagues have, in terms of what happened at the federal level, and I could talk about that. So, from a legal positioning, legal jockeying standpoint, what the plaintiff did was drop certain defendants, okay? Took them out of the lawsuit. City council was dropped as a defendant in the lawsuit. So I'm not being sued, Shayna's not being sued, Winn or Moses. But that doesn't mean, a lot of people perceive that as the city council now supporting the power plant, or we packed it in and it's going to happen. That's not true. The second thing from the federal level is that the consent decree that Judge Sorkin has ratified really says two things in it. It's a very wordy document. What it says is, the city council or any boards have to act lawful, which we always do, and cannot discriminate against a proponent or an applicant. That's what it says. What I will say is this, if you look at the online version of the Brockton Enterprise tonight, you'll see the city council has sued Mayor Carpenter. It's on tonight's website, you'll see it. We filed an action in Superior Court in Plymouth County. So I think that speaks volumes for itself. We're not, as elected officials, we're not going to talk about legal jockeying or positioning. But I just want to make it clear on behalf of myself and that my colleagues, because a lot of people have called us saying, "You guys, just, you support it now, you sellouts." That is 100% far from reality, or far from the truth. So, what I will say again, having served for 11 years on the city council, this issue's been for 10 years, I will say that the city council does not act irrationally, especially when you're talking about suing a mayor, okay? And that has happened, and that's going on right now. You can read about it in tomorrow's paper if you choose to, or you could call us one-on-one. We can't talk about it collectively. But again, that didn't come up tonight, but I thought before we conclude tonight, you needed to be aware of that. Is there anything else that you want to talk about tonight to any of you at large? No? Well, first of all, on behalf of Shayna, Winn, Moses, myself, I want to thank you. We go to a lot of ward meetings. This is a well-attended meeting. So, kudos to you. Again, it's citywide. We will have another one. We will have three more. This is the first of four. Really, a location to be determined, but it's either going to be West, South, or East Middle School. And we're going to continue to do this because we work with you, and more importantly, we work for you. Thank you all tonight. Thank you.